Welcome back to another sizzling episode of Neighbors Cooking. Today, we're excited to share a healthy and delicious recipe, perfect for these sweltering summer days, a Vietnamese summer salad. When the temperatures soar, our kitchen's routine needs a cool twist. This delightful salad is ready in about thirty minutes, making it the ideal dinner solution to keep your kitchen cool and your tummy happy. Our Vietnamese summer salad brings all of the flavors you adore into an easy-to-assemble dish. We're talking rice noodles, shrimp, avocado, a medley of thinly sliced veggies, and lots of fresh greens, all tossed in a zesty milk chum dressing. Let's talk about the dressings for a minute. Vietnamese summer rolls traditionally come with a range of dipping sauces. I've adapted the spicy, sweet, and sour sauce, nuk chum sauce, into a light vinaigrette that infuses your noodles and veggies with delightful flavor minus the heaviness. And, of course, we couldn't forget the richer peanut dressing, enhanced with a hoisin sauce and a garlic chili paste, perfect for every adding bursts of savory goodness throughout your bowl. So stay tuned as we dive into this exciting and refreshing recipe. But before we get started, I am thrilled to introduce a special guest who brings a wealth of experience and passion to our kitchen. He is the dynamic chairman of the Takwits Neighborhood Organization, the proactive president of Safe PS Golf, and a dedicated compliance manager at AmeriHome Mortgage. I wish I'd have met him before I bought my house, maybe I got a better mortgage rate. But that's not all, he's also our current candidate for the city of Palm Springs, District Four. An area close to my heart and full of vibrant neighborhoods like Los Compadres, Sonora Sunrise, Rimrock, Melody Ranch, Araby Cove, Araby Commons, Takwits Creek Golf, Little Beverly Hills, Westgate, Eldorado Palms, and Gateway. It's eleven different areas of our city, all in one district. And it also happens to be my former neighborhood. So I'm super excited to bring our guest on today. His commitment to community and service is matched by his love for cooking and family. He's married to his wonderful husband of seventeen years, ten years dating, seven years married, and together they have a bustling household with three lovable cats and two energetic dogs. So please welcome Ernest Sessena to our Neighbors Cooking kitchens. Hello, my friend, did I say your last name right?
Sessena.
Sessena, there we go. I got the little thing over your E.
Thanks for that.
We're gonna have you come right over here, welcome, thank you for coming.
Sure thing, sure thing.
So, you know, each week we bring a new guest on, a new mover and shaker in the community, and you are one.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So you're running for District Four.
I am, I am.
Tell me why you're running.
You know, it's, uh, it's an evolution, really. I mean, I moved in Palm Springs to work on my tan lines. I, I came here but learned very quickly that Palm Springs had issues like every other city.
Right.
And immediately, people I'd asked, they saw my interest in the neighborhood and the issues, and they said, "Do you want to be chair of our neighborhood? The position's open." Picked it up and slowly started realizing that my thirty years of experience in the mortgage banking industry started coming into play as far as managing people, projects, expectations, risk.
So what's your goal for, what's your goal, what's your vision for Palm Springs?
You know, uh...
Besides these beautiful long lashes you got, amazing.
Like I said, all the boys in my family have them.
I'm mesmerized by them, but anyway, on to your mission.
Uh, mission, so I, I really wanna emphasize that the city council role is, uh, is a dual role. It's a representative of the city, and it is a representative of a district, District Four. And it's those community issues that I really wanna focus on. Of course, city issues, big city issues, your affordable housing, homelessness, building bridges. There's an entire team dedicated to making improvements in those. I mean, city staff, manager, everybody, city attorney. It's the community issues that are kinda, they're not always easy to identify.
They're not, and it's, and, and, you know, like you said, and each district has different neighborhoods that have different needs and different expectations.
Exactly.
Um, and it's kinda like a recipe, you gotta bring all of these different ingredients together
Yeah.
to come up with a recipe that works for everybody.
Yeah, and, and these issues can affect hundreds of people.
Oh, yes.
Sometimes thousands.
Yeah, I, um, I sit on the leadership council here and, which is designed, it was initially designed or developed eight or nine years ago. And its purpose, its mission is to bring together all of the nonprofits, LGBTQ nonprofits and allies, the leaders of each of those nonprofits, so in the event of an emergency or something, we can all, we have this network of people. And so we actually have like twelve thousand people under our umbrella that we can mobilize.
I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah, so it's really cool. I also sit on the board of Village Fest.
Nice.
So maybe one day I'll run for a city council position, I don't know.
There you go, there you go. You sound like a mover and shaker yourself.
Grace Carter is our, is my district person, she was just on the show last week.
Yeah, that's right.
And we had a great time with her, and, you know, I enjoy meeting all of the movers, not just movers and shakers, but the people that are leaders in our community. And that doesn't mean they're a mover and shaker, it means that they're a leader that has stepped up to take over a nonprofit or to, to...
That's a mover and a shaker, somebody that's gonna take that leadership role.
Yes.
Yeah, they deserve a lot of credit.
You know, and we have so many organizations here that are just so spectacular, and so it's so fun to meet all these people and see the little pieces that they bring to this master puzzle that we have.
Yeah.
And, and we have earned, we, we as a community, our entire Palm Springs community has earned this amazing reputation for being diverse and, and welcoming. And I think that's our, you know, should be our tagline, Palm Springs, we welcome you.
And I felt it, as soon as I moved here, I felt it, and I said, "This is something I wanna be a part of."
Right, well, I'm excited that you're running, I think you're gonna do great. You've got five people competing with you, right?
Uh, there are four others, yes.
Four others, alright, not really competing.
I'm pretty comfortable with my campaign.
Good, good, and you start collecting signatures next week?
On Monday, so I've already made the appointment with the city clerk and a minimum of eighty signatures, and, uh...
So you just go to door to door and collect signatures, or what do you do?
Everyone does it differently, my goal, I mean, my, my thing is reaching out to the community, so, yeah, I'm gonna be going door to door, I'm gonna go to those people that have already supported me up to this point, and, uh, 'cause I want, their names mean something.
Well, and you've gotta meet the people, I mean, you know, I, it's, it's, I'm always intrigued by, you know, I'm trying to get Will Rollins to come on the show, because I think that...
He's busy.
He's busy, but not, but, but I think that he brings so much more to the table, right? Our, the other representative who we won't talk about, um, has, has become just a factoid.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't really think about our community, and when Palm Springs got added into that community, into his district for running, he didn't really care about us.
But I see the commercials him trying.
I, he's really trying, saying, "When you can't count..."
They really are.
They are obvious, so what kind of food do you like?
Um, I grew up with nothing but Mexican, poor Mexican food.
Poor Mexican, the tamales.
I mean, yeah, I mean, very simple, very simple, but to these, to this day, I, I mean, I, I hold those recipes true to my heart.
Absolutely.
I've taught my husband, he's taken a fond liking and puts his own little twist on them.
I did a show two years ago, there was a tamale show.
No.
And I had never made a tamale in my life, and all the years of cooking, I'd never even made one.
They're complicated.
And a friend of mine's mother, who is, who is Spanish, Mexican, she came on, she didn't speak, didn't speak English. So I had a guest on the show that didn't speak English, that was teaching me how to make tamales with an interpreter off to the side, and they were so much fun, and I learned so much.
How did you figure that, okay, so did she show up with the meat?
No, so what we did was I, we did a, we did a beef and we did a chicken.
And it was already prepared?
I, well, no, we, we actually, uh, yes and no.
Okay, 'cause that's where a lot of the magic comes from.
And it's a lengthy process, right? So, no, we didn't, we couldn't make all the tamales in thirty minutes, but, you know, we, we made it, I gave people how to make it, showed them how to make it.
Excellent.
We made a mole and we made a chicken and green.
A mole, you did, okay, nice.
And, you know, just learning how to spread the maize on the, on the corn husk, and, um, and it's a process.
It is.
And, but the nice thing about it was, 'cause, you know, every time I buy tamale somewhere, they're like a little tiny bit of meat and a bunch of corn, and I was like, slather that meat on there, you know?
Pretty much a burrito.
Right, a burrito, almost, and it was so much fun, I had so much fun doing that and, and learning about the culture, and that's what I love about cooking.
Yeah.
Is we get to learn about all these different cultures. Today, we're doing a Vietnamese dish. I don't know if you've had Vietnamese food before.
Uh, I've tried it, yes.
Okay, what do you think about it, spicy?
Uh, you know, I love all food.
You do like spicy?
Yeah.
Alright, so we're gonna do this Vietnamese salad. So if you think about a Vietnamese roll when you go into a Vietnamese restaurant, and it's a rice roll, it's a rice cake, a rice sheet of paper, thin paper that, they put all the ingredients like a burrito, and they wrap it up and they roll it, and they're just beautiful, but I, no possible way it was gonna make something like that, because they would all break apart and fall apart. So I decided to deconstruct that roll, and we're gonna create a salad, a healthy salad.
Nice.
And we're not gonna get the kitchen too hot, the only thing we're gonna use later is just to, um, poach some salmon.
Okay.
And not salmon, some shrimp. Um, so I'm gonna go through the recipe, and then we're gonna start kinda working together at the counter and building these bowls, okay? So it's a little bit, um, it's gonna seem like a lot of ingredients, but it's really not. So we've got two sauces that we're gonna make. The nuk chum sauce, which is kinda like the vinaigrette, and then we're gonna make a Vietnamese peanut sauce, super simply again, it is four ingredients in, in both of those. And we're gonna, we're going to dress the noodles in the, um, nuk chum sauce, and then we're gonna top it with the Vietnamese peanut sauce. And then we're gonna create these bowls that have all of these great things. So let me go through the ingredients with you, and then we will start building. So for the first sauce, the nuk chum sauce, we're gonna use three tablespoons of sugar. We're gonna use, the recipe calls for bird's eye chili, so a bird's eye chili is a red chili. They look like serrano chilies, I searched everywhere in town for the red, I couldn't find them. So we're using serrano chilies, um, but if you can find the little red chilies that look like this, that's what you would put into it, I just couldn't find any, anywhere I went in the city today. We're gonna use a quarter cup of fresh lime juice and two tablespoons of fish sauce. So that's the first sauce, that's kind of our vinaigrette. And then the second sauce is the peanut sauce. In that, we're putting six tablespoons of a hoisin sauce. We're putting three tablespoons of a, of a creamy peanut butter, you could use a nutty peanut butter, but use creamy, and you can add peanuts at the end if you really want peanuts on it, more peanuts. We're gonna add two tablespoons of rice vinegar, and we're gonna add two tablespoons of a chili garlic paste. You will find all of these ingredients right in your local store, Jensen's, Bond's, Albertson's, until we lose, we're about to lose some stores here.
Well, it's not official yet, I don't want everyone up in arms quite yet.
Right.
I mean, it has to be approved, it has to be approved, so we're looking into what can be done. I believe the government to make sure that...
And no antitrust kinda stuff.
Yeah, exactly, it, it's before the sale of, the merger of Albertson's and Kroger.
Right.
Has to be approved before they can sell off these additional sixty-three, sixty-eight stores.
Sixty-three, I think it was, so, that's gonna be a bad, sad thing for us if we lose those.
But there's something that we can do, so it's just looking into it.
Good, good.
Yeah, I'm already working with a couple of the neighborhoods.
Well, good, I think that's great. And then we're gonna all, from, from once we create these sauces, we're gonna do these bowls that have, um, a tablespoon of sugar, has unseasoned, a tablespoon of unseasoned rice vinegar, we have some kosher salt, and then we're gonna get into the vegetables that go in it. So we're using some shrimp that I've already cleaned and taken the tails off of. So we've got these large, beautiful jumbo shrimp, and we're gonna end up putting those into the water in a minute, I'll hand them over to you. We're also going to use eight ounces of straight cut rice noodles. So if you haven't seen a rice noodle, it's in the same aisle that you do, you'll find your pasta in. It's just a rice noodle, they're very thin, they take about two minutes to cook in your, in your, in boiling water. Since this is a cold salad, we, I cooked them earlier, put them into an ice bath so that they wouldn't all clog together, and we've got these beautiful rice noodles that are gonna be part of our salad. So instead of the rice wrap that we would use, we're using the rice noodles. We're also gonna put in, um, two cups of thinly sliced romaine lettuce, a large carrot that we're gonna slice into long batons, you know what a baton fruit is, what a baton cut is?
No.
I'm gonna, you're gonna do it and understand it. And we're gonna put in a Persian cucumber that also is done in long batons. The difference between a regular cucumber and a Persian cucumber is size. So the little Persian cucumbers are the little small cucumbers, bigger cucumbers are regular cucumbers, then you have English cucumbers that are obnoxiously large. And they all have about the same flavor, we're just using them because they're smaller and easier to use. We're also gonna use half of an avocado, half of an avocado that we're gonna slice, and then we're gonna put in fresh mint, cilantro, and some Thai basil. Now, I couldn't find any Thai basil, I said we're using regular basil. The difference between Thai basil and regular basil is Thai basil has more of an anise flavor, like more of a licorice flavor to it, it's not my favorite. So we're going with regular basil, mint, and then we're putting in some cilantro, and I know this doesn't look like cilantro, uh, I got it from one of the local micro growers down in Ketchum.
Okay.
So there's a new grower, and now I'm gonna struggle for the name, so I've been going through and get the container, and I can tell you guys the name of it. They actually just came on to be a vendor, Village Fest, thermal greens, so they're out in thermal.
Nice.
And so they have a grow house out there, and they're growing all these micro, microgreens. And if you don't know what a microgreen is, look it up, and I'll give you a little bit of detail. It's basically a healthier version of the dirt version.
Nice.
So these are done in small, small pots, they're grown in greenhouses, um, there's no, there's no pesticides, it's all natural. So this one is a broccoli salad, so this is a microgreen broccoli salad, so it looks like... So you would never think it was broccoli, but it tastes like broccoli.
Interesting.
Yeah, so, and they're healthier for you and better for you, and so, look into microgreens for sustainability, it's incredible, and you wanna, it's something that you should do. Now, the two sauces that we're making, you can make those up to three days in advance and throw them in the fridge. You could also do your noodles a couple days in advance and put them in the fridge, so you can always just throw this together whenever you want to. So let's start with the first sauce, I'm gonna give you a bowl, I'm gonna have you come over here. There you go, let me get a whisk.
I need all the directions.
All the directions.
My husband is the cook.
There's a whisk, alright, so, in this bowl, I'm gonna move some of this stuff up, and we'll be over here. We're gonna start with the nuk chum sauce, and I don't, any, I don't want any comments that I pronounce that wrong, okay? That's the best I can do, I'm sure it's something like nuoc chum, but, um, not Vietnamese, so I don't know, but it's as close as this white boy American can get, okay? So in this bowl, we're gonna put together the sugar. Alright, it's in the fridge, so a couple tablespoons of sugar. We're going to put in a half a cup of hot water. I've got my little thing over here, and we're just gonna high it, there we go. You're gonna let that dissolve, and then you're gonna whisk in the chilies. So we've already cut these up. Alright, you can cut them up smaller if you like, they're not that terribly hot. And we're gonna put in the lime juice. And we're gonna put in the fish oil, there you go. So this is like a vinaigrette that we're making, so go ahead and whisk that all together. And I'm gonna get a little spoon.
Could you use, since the noodles were prepared beforehand, if you were doing all that same time, could you use water from the noodles?
I wouldn't use, so the problem with the water from the noodles is, first of all, it's, if you're, you're wanting to cool this down, so you're gonna get sticky noodles.
Got it.
So you don't wanna keep them in that, you wanna put it into an ice bath, um, because just like pasta, it's gonna get sticky.
Yeah.
So you gotta put it in an ice bath, cool it down, so that's good. So this is like our vinaigrette that's gonna go on the noodles shortly. So we're gonna move that over, and then we're gonna make the peanut sauce. And the peanut sauce, we're gonna add, we're gonna start with that mushu. Not mushu, the, what did I call it, what did I say, this was, it was hoisin sauce. So you can make hoisin sauce, or you can just buy it, I just bought it. Peanut butter, not allergic to peanuts, are you?
Nope.
Peanut butter. We've got some rice wine, vinegar, and we've got the garlic chili. Again, you can buy all of these in your store, any store, so you're gonna whisk all that together. Into a nice little... Gotta get in there. Don't be shy.
I don't wanna splash it.
Ah, splash it. kitchens are made for messes.
That's what dogs are for, picking up the mess.
Pick up the mess, yeah. There you are, he's just waiting, okay, let's taste this. Really good, wanna taste it?
Are we done with the whisk?
Yep, with the sauce. It's got a little kick to it.
Oh, nice.
Right?
I like that.
Yeah. So those are our two sauces that we're gonna put on it. So the next thing that we wanna do is we wanna start to prepare these vegetables that are gonna go into it. So I've got my mandolin here.
A what?
Mandolin.
Okay.
So mandolin is something that you use for slicing and dicing, there's different, there's different sides to it, so you can get different textures on your, so you got a straight edge, and you've got this kinda rippled edge. So the rippled edge is gonna give you this ribbon.
Bill, you can't have that.
Yes, you can, Bill.
We have enough gadgets around.
I, I, I don't, I'm not a big gadget person, I used to be, and I had to put myself on probation.
Okay.
Because I hate stuff on my counters, I'm not a big counter, like gadget kinda guy, and I like just to use what I need to use. And I, I think that if you have too many gadgets, especially like in a show like this, people don't have those gadgets. So I try to use as few gadgets as possible, but, so in this case, we're gonna use this mandolin. Now, I know people that will use this without this, and they will lose a finger. Because they're super sharp, alright, so you gotta be really careful. So if you're doing it, you're gonna take it and you just...
So you just warned me and you're gonna do it anyway.
I can watch my fingers, but if you, don't do this at home, folks, okay? So if you get closer, but, you have these lovely ribbons of carrots. So we're gonna have some of those for the dish. Don't worry, the counters are clean. But as you get closer to the edge, that's where this comes in. Alright? So we've got all these nice little ribbons, these aren't very nice ribbons. But we've got some nice ribbons here for the salad. We're gonna do the same thing with the cucumbers, you wanna give your hand on it?
No, no, I'm fine.
He wants to keep all his fingers for biting. Alright, so we're gonna go through and do the same thing with these, and we get all these great ribbons.
Those are pretty.
So those are gonna go into our salad also. Alright. And then we have all these greens, and then we've got our avocado. I'm just gonna cut these up. Avocados, some people think they're difficult to cut.
Oh, no.
I think they're super easy.
That's a staple in our house.
Avocado?
Oh, yeah.
Of course it is. Alright, we're gonna get some nice strips out of this. There you go, I'm gonna get a large spoon. And we're just gonna... Take that right out. Voila. Right, so much easier. And this one. Alright, so we've got these great avocados. So now, it's just a matter of assembly. So before we do that, I'm gonna have you put the shrimp in that boiling water for about three minutes. So we are, we are, um, poaching the salmon, basically, is what, I mean, the shrimp is basically what we're doing. So it's gonna be there until it gets to be a nice little pink, let's turn this up to boiling.
Have you made it with salmon before? Is that where the salmon's coming from?
No, no, I don't, I, I, I don't know why salmon, I do know why salmon was on my head, I had a bunch of comments there on my website about the salmon dish.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so for some reason, salmon is sticking in my shrimp and salmon, and they both start with S's. I suppose you could...
In case somebody wasn't...
You could, you, you could use salmon, I suppose, I don't know that peanut butter and salmon would go very well together.
I don't know, that sauce is pretty yummy, I don't...
So, you know, shrimp tends to have a more neutral, you, you can use it with a lot of different things.
Yeah.
So I probably would stay with shrimp. You could also do chicken, you know, 'cause chicken and these sauces would go well together. So we're gonna, how's that going? So I'm gonna take, oh, it's done. Let me get my colander. So shrimp doesn't take a really terribly long time to cook, it's very quick. And if you cook it too long, you end up getting a very tough, rough shrimp. And that we don't want. So all we put in here was a little bit of salt. When I made the noodles earlier, there was salt and some lemon, some lime juice in it, so I used the same water to do the shrimp, what I would typically do, because we don't have the time to do all of those steps. I just went ahead and made that first, and we're just gonna do that. So you've never been in politics till now?
This is my first election.
Yep.
It is.
So how did you learn, I mean, it's, it's a process.
It is a process, luckily I had a two-year jumpstart when, uh, the position was possibly gonna open up. I had it two years ago.
I ran a city council, um, election for somebody in Atlanta.
Oh, there you go.
Many years ago, and that was a bitter race, let me tell ya, there was, it was for the downtown district, which was predominantly the LGBT district. The person that had been in that district had been in that seat for like eighteen years.
Wow.
And wasn't gonna come back, and then, so it was an open seat.
Okay.
And like forty people, you know, like it was a crazy number of people that tried to run, and they're eventually narrowed down to nine, um, and he ended up coming in third, which, you know, was, for a first effort, wasn't bad.
Yeah.
I mean, because it was interesting as we started, you know, 'cause we were going out asking for Democratic support, the party, and they're like, "No, we've already picked the person that we want to be in it, that's who we're gonna give the money to." And as he kept coming up in the polls, then they started coming and going, "Well, maybe we should give you some money, maybe we should support you."
Yeah, it's, it's difficult, I mean, with, it's a busy year for elections this year, and the resources as far as help, campaign managers, you name it, even fundraising.
Yep.
Everyone has their hand out, everyone's, uh, everyone's trying to run a race here in Palm Springs.
Well, and I'm gonna tell y'all, you need to vote this year, it is, it is essential. This is truly a fight for democracy this year.
I agree, I agree.
Whoever's the head of the ticket's the head of the ticket, but we have to vote.
Yep.
And that's what we failed to do here in Palm Springs, last, set for the last round. When Will Rollins was running, he barely, I don't know what he lost by, but not much, a few hundred votes, I think.
Yeah.
But it was a very close race, and had our community come out and, and really stepped up and voted, he would've won. So y'all get out and vote, it's important, it's not just something that you should take nonchalantly. Our votes matter, no matter what you hear from other people, and they're important, so get out and vote.
He learned a lot from the last election.
Don't make me come to your house. Alright, so these are done, can you turn that off for me? We're gonna drain these shrimp. And then we're gonna put the shrimp also in an ice bath, because we would like those to be cool. I didn't have an ice water in my old house, it's such a wonderful place.
He is just waiting for you to drop something.
He is, aren't you, Betty? My little boy, he's such a beautiful dog.
He is.
Alright, so we got the shrimp in an ice bath, because we're making a salad, so we don't need something super hot. So we're gonna put this together. Joe, can you see this? Yep, alright, you can talk. It's okay. Alright, so we're gonna take some of our noodles first. We'll take a little bit of our vinaigrette sauce. Some peppers, just a little bit. We're gonna get a nice coating on that. One more thing I need to do, cut up some of this romaine. And here we go. So we're gonna start with some of the noodles. There we go, there you go. And we're gonna put those in the middle. And then we're gonna turn a little bit of our romaine, put it on the side here. Some of our cucumbers. Some of our carrots.
Alright, it looks beautiful.
Some of our avocado. Cut a little piece of wine. We've got some cilantro. Some mint. Some basil. And then we're gonna take our shrimp. Put those in. And then we're gonna take our peanut sauce. It seemed a little bit thick today, so I think we'll add a little bit of water, just to dash. Alright. And we're going to pour some of this right around the edges. Close the top. A little bit of cilantro light on the very top. And there we have it.
It's beautiful.
This is five hundred calories.
Really?
Five hundred calories.
Well, then double it. Well, then double it.
Double it. Make it bigger. Alright, so sir, you're gonna get the first taste to that camera.
Okay.
Get some sauce and avocado, get it all together. So you could mix this all together in one big bowl and have everything got all the sauce on it, but you could also do it in little sections.
I love that peanut sauce.
Isn't it good?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And then you get the mint in there, and the basil, and all the different flavors. So it's like this constant new explosion of flavors as we go around and mix...
It just keeps coming.
Mix these flavors together.
Yeah, this is amazing.
Well, thank you. So that about wraps up our show. It's been a delightful, inspiring episode. I love learning about the people running for office in our city and the things people do.
Yeah, thank you, Brett.
So thank you for stepping up and doing that. I have the greatest respect for people who do things like that. I thank you for taking time to help create this amazing recipe. Like I said earlier, community, building community is like a recipe. You have to bring all the components together, and you have to listen to all those pieces and bring it into a great flavor. So I hope you do the best in District Four. It is, right? Uh, your passion and commitment will make Palm Springs a better place for sure. So I wish you the best of success in that. And as a friendly reminder, everybody, one more time, the importance of voting in the upcoming election cannot be overstated.